Good evening everybody, welcome to the Full Town Council Meeting. I'll just remind you of the recording script. Please note this meeting is being recorded by the Town Council. Please note the recording device is sensitive and the recording cannot be edited, so do not say that you do not want recording. If necessary, I will direct all recording in the room to be stopped. Generally, I want to avoid doing that, so we will normally record everything except any item taken in close session. Members of the public may also make their own recordings, but must follow our rules for doing so, including stopping the recording when requested. Thank you. Item one, apologies for absence.
We have apologies from Councillor Fernand, who is at the Borough Meeting this evening. Councillor Fernand, Councillor Gary Stroud and Councillor Jimmy Stroud.
And Councillor Brown.
Item two, declaration of interest and request for dispensations.
Item three.
Item three, to confirm the Minister for the Full Town Council meeting held on 25th of November. Members should receive copies or net packs. Everybody got copy? Therefore, the paper I paid for accurately first if it may. The first page numbered 165, 166, 167 and 168. There's an appendix attached with various reports. I'm going to show the hands to show that these are correct record. Item four, matters arising. There are four listed here, some may be covered by the agenda. First item is C14098 on page 166. Waiting response from Sir Evra on the listing of the right of ways of community asset.
We are still waiting a response, however, we're also aware that I have checked with Ian Poole in the Planning Strategy Department, that the current design for the North West development, that this was concerning, does actually allocate the grounds we were concerned about as a country park, which is what we wanted to see. So if that goes through, we will get our wish without using the device of the listing of the community asset. It's not with Zander Farrow, she should still respond to us in terms of the request. But the purpose of it is hopefully going in the right direction, it's very important.
Proposals are... Just to correct, to meet Ian, Town Park, he said North West, it should be North East.
North East is all right.
Proposals are we confirming further action on this until such time as the North East proposal is further up and becomes a planning application. Anybody wish to comment otherwise? Do you need to put those on the app? That's the action we're telling.
Just one thing. If that happens to fall at the point where we're unable to act because of the election coming up, then we should delegate that authority to the Town Park Commission.
It wouldn't have any impact. That's about publicity. We wouldn't stop the council business continuing.
Thank you. Item B. Sorry. Yes, item B. How are you doing, Paul?
The Hayville block, the Angels are complete, all set up and ready, and we're hoping to arrange a photo call with the Mayor in the Angels. Did you know something with that? The metal one, I'm okay with that. It's a Christmasy thing. But yes, they're done, they are at their school. Work can now begin on the column. The design for the actual clock faces is now proceeding. So obviously, you're getting a month by a month, blow by blow account, so things are travelling along nicely. Every month, there's clear progress as stuff goes on.
Likely you see the Angels arrive before Christmas. Any questions from councillors? Thank you. Item C, Town Halling's lines.
It was confirmed at the Hayville area working party that the Town Halling's sign will be erected as soon as they're prepared, and that should be completed quite quickly.
And the last item, parish boundary, has been in movement or is that still on?
No, supposedly it's been discussed at the Borough. I haven't said anything about the outcome of the meeting yet. I did email and ask for an update. I'll ask on Thursday when I see the Chief Executive for what the update is.
So with consent of the councillors, apart from the first item, which obviously we deferred for the time being, the other three will remain on the agenda for future items. Is that correct? Councillor.
On this parish boundary, it was asked at a planning meeting about it being in Whindersville. Is this going to be included in our, with you, parish, boundary, you ought to say, the North East?
Russian boundaries.
The North East part, is that going to be included?
The whole area of Hayville. Councillor Goody at the time asked that not just the existing proposals adjacent to Hayville, but also in terms of any potential future development, so that new boundaries is drawn up for Hayville. So yes, it was certainly included in the proposed development, potentially any space that may be a future development when we get forward on it.
Thank you. Page 166 in, page 167, I'm not sure why we had an action there, Paul. Are you finding it confusing? That's probably the standard. Page 168. Thank you very much. Thank you all again. So, Councillor.
I was absent at the last meeting, and I'd just like to let the councillors know that I was at home waiting for an ambulance as my wife is very ill. But she's back out in hospital now and fine, so that's why I wasn't here. I try to try and be here when I can.
Thank you, Councillor Goody, we would have liked to hear you as long as you're much better now, and to have you hear the ambulance came at the time.
You did, and have a very nice trip.
Good, thank you. A generally meeting now for reports, and we'll start with the police officers who currently join us. PCSO Sophie Mitchell and PCSO Mark Isaac.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Flashing our apologies for the absence, if I really see results, myself mark on plums to deliver short police report to yourselves. Unfortunately, we didn't have the comparative year-on-year statistics. We've had a short list of the fire figures since the last police report was reported over the town. So they are as follows. There's been nineteen instances of criminal damage, three accidents. They are a series of five which have occurred in the town recently, and they're currently being investigated by the team. And we're doing some joint agency work with the fire service as well to help investigate those. There are sixteen burglary other buildings. Seven of those were a series of over the last check rates which occurred in one town, one road in the town. Eight burglary dwellings, a lot of these have been by insecure vehicles. Thirteen theft from shops, a large number of these were the same offender who has since been arrested and dealt with. Six theft from motor vehicles. Five theft with penalty titles. Again, that's a trend in Spain which we've had recently. All of those have been had been secured just in front of gardens. Possibly will be just a bit easier to get as time will take it. Fourteen instances of assault and two drug offences. So they're the latest five figures for yourselves. You can keep up to date with the weekly news updates from the Police on the YouTube channel, and also we have Twitter at Police Hayville for the latest updates. Is there any questions for areas, issues or concerns to Town Councils, who'd like to raise your attention?
Edna, thank you for your words, we should have known Christmas.
Thank you very much. Likewise to yourselves.
Can I just ask, the assault, are the fourteen assaults, are they associated with other crimes? Or are they just assaults? Sorry, just assaults, sounds terrible, isn't it? Are they blatant assaults or are they associated with?
A lot of them we find are often domestic related. They're not all just drunken, disorderly, look at their violence, it's been nice. So they are very, we just happen to get as assaults.
Yeah, from unknown injury to shooting.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. Please feel free to go, I hope this remained a recipe, so I'm sure you've got plenty to do. Thank you for your time. I have one counter, Councillor, the thoughts submitted by ten which are part of the video.
This is from Councillor Tom Brown. He gives his apologies for not being able to attend, as he's also a Borough councillor, he's incidentally a member of the council meeting tonight. Damage ravings around about outside Old Wills that he mentioned at the last meeting have now been replaced. Yesterday, he received confirmation from County Council that he can provide from his highway budget a vehicle activated sign system for the Hayville PCSMT to use at various speeding hotspots around the town. Two PCSOs have offered to do the training associated operator. Councillor Brown's been chasing the date of installation of new signage for High Street. He's reaching out late weeks from when Servo was carried out, which was about eight weeks ago. Since then, he's been asking for a firm date, which is not been forthcoming. So his table of questions will be asked at the County Council for the council meeting on Thursday. Hopefully, we'll get an answer there. And he extends his wishes for a Merry Christmas and a Happy Year to him.
Councillor. The reason you mentioned those signs, there has been new signs below, hasn't there? The Town Centre. So it came down from top of Hazelstone. And as you get to the reg, there's a new sign we've got up Town Centre which is going up on the site.
I think this is a reference to our...
Is that the one we were talking about?
I think this is the signs that...
That's a brand new sign, there was the yesterday and today.
It may be hard to... These signs in particular are to try and persuade people that they actually aren't allowed to drive up.
Well, that's where it is. As you come down to Hazelstone, when you get to the reg, the reg is on your right. Instead, normally, the Town Centre's in front of you. There's no direct in you up.
Ah, good.
That's good. That is up today. Or yesterday, I should say.
Councillor Brown.
I went to a conference about various things at County Council Network Conference, and the subject of council housing, proper council housing, can I? I had an interview last week before with the Chief Executive of the council. And I'm trying to persuade her that it would be a good idea if they put in place the same system has been used in a couple of other councils, where the county council builds social housing on its own right with a partner, so that right to buy doesn't apply, so you can invest in housing. And I'll keep pushing that. I've got a question on Thursday to the Cabinet Member for Highways and Transport about what the hell is happening in School Lane. Could you put that more diplomatically, please? It's over six months. The funding's agreed, highways, people would be very cooperative, it just hasn't happened. So we'll start prodding further along and see what we can do. That's it.
Thank you, Councillor Brown. I am aware that School Lane, the school itself, will not support those sort of words going on during the school term, so I think we expect something to happen during the political election. Public forum, anyone from the public which has asked a question or made a comment?
The paper just mentioned about the signs, who've gone on to go with it? Colin's quite correct, these are the ones to try and stop people going down the High Street. I think there's going to be, there's about twenty signs in all that are going to be done. Most of them in the High Street. One, as I mentioned, up at the rec, and also one outside the boundary to try and tell people, don't even attempt to come down here. Kayla, the PCSO assault this morning, she's issuing on average three tickets an hour down the High Street at the moment. Quite often, ten to fifteen tickets a day, quite often repeat attenders as well. And they're all denied, and they, you know, they're still up there, they're twenty-five years. I didn't know you could drive up High Street, couldn't drive up High Street through ten and four, so that's the sort of thing she's getting. Unfortunately, she gets a lot of bits of abuse while I'm driving.
Thank you. Gordon.
Could I ask a really simple question? Why the authorities are not prepared to make a definite stand on the High Street? And if perfectly obvious some motorists, if they're going to say for the pedestrians that that is a restricted area, therefore if Queen Street can be blocked, why isn't the High Street blocked? There are, I know there's an awful lot of money spent in Hayville about twenty years ago, making sure that access to the buildings from the rear, particularly on the, I don't know what it's called, I mean, the big insurance building, I'm sorry. Was running to thousands. And yet somehow, we've never really got a definitive answer to the High Street. And it wouldn't cost a lot to say that at this time, it is no access to the High Street.
I can only advise, Gordon, that the Town Council have been pressing for pedestrianisation in the High Street for some years. There are people whose interests are not served by pedestrianisation, and those traders and people with large businesses backing onto the High Street. There are a number of reasons why people would object to pedestrianisation, although there are many more reasons. In my view, one should have pedestrianisation. Because we've been unable to solve it so far, the matter has now been passed on as part of the master plan. And during the master plan consultation, everybody would have the opportunity to express their view on pedestrianisation in the context of keeping the Town Centre thriving and vibrant. And those are the main issues concerning the pedestrianisation. I don't think we can solve it here. I think we can press for a sensible solution. And the solution that we've pressed for so far is for ten to four during the weekdays. I just really, it's my frustration, this is the issue. Understand, Councillor.
Yeah, I just wanted to support that. As our mayor said, we've looked at closing off the High Street with just some hours, not just a full pedestrianisation. And there has been, as the mayor said, a couple of key businesses that have opposed that rather vehemently, and unfortunately, they do carry some weight in the town. Looking at the cost, yes. We were told by a fairly senior County Councillor who came up to visit us and has since resigned, that seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds altogether was available to sort the High Street out. And in a proposal that we discussed, probably in some variation in the pub, with the former Town Clerk, that for that price, we could install a pair of gates at each end of the High Street and pay someone to man it, which would overcome all other objections for at least the next forty years, which is how long it's already been going on.
Thank you, Gordon. A question that we often return to, I'm sure, and I hope it'll answer the panel side of the board. Have any other...
I'm going to just say, I've not been on this council very long, so I don't know many of the rules and regulations, but I've been in this town for nearly seventy years. And that street would be controlled by, as you not mentioning the name, but I will, Gertie's control on the town still. There was a chap, I've heard from a meeting, I don't know if it was a council meeting, somebody came out of Mixwich, and everybody within the town should be saying about who they were, councillor or whatever, all wanted this sorted out, this street. And he apparently stood up, slammed it down, "I am the portfolio holder, this is what you're brought in all now." Now, whether it's true or not, you can tell me. But this has been going on, what do you say, twenty-five years? Possibly longer, thirty years. Now we've got another fifteen. Most of us will be dead before this is done. Don't you think that somebody should be pushing a little bit harder?
I would say, Councillor Robbins, first of all, that yes, we did have a highway that County Council highlighted for Bolecombe, who wasn't very cooperative with our wishes. As far as Gertie is concerned, they aren't by any means the only objectors to close the High Street. And they do have plans in progress at the moment to provide in terms of access to their premises through some demolition which may or may not be approved. So things are moving, and unfortunately, it's major things, they don't move very quickly. But the concerted effort of Town Council and a number of other agencies have helped us to move to where we are now, where it's being considered as a realistic proposition. But there are a whole raft of issues surrounding access to the premises of traders. And some traders have concerns about the loss of trade resulting from people not being able to park in the High Street. We have also to appreciate that there are people who are blue badge holders who do have concerns about the poor access from the existing car parks. So there are a lot of stakeholders. Our job as Town Councilors is to try and meet the wishes of the majority. That is what we strive to do.
The wishes of the majority, that's what we need to conclude.
In amongst our council members, we still need to bear in mind that we need an active, thriving Town Centre. That's an important part of the issue. I think the master plan is a real step in the right direction, and there has been a change of the uncooperative County Council referendum.
Yeah, there's just an old saying, or Grandma used to say, "If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got." But you've been doing this for forty years, maybe it's worthwhile looking at a different way of approaching it.
Thank you, Councillor Robbins. I wish your grandmother was available to stay in for the Town Council. I suspect that's... Thank you. Thank you very much, Gordon, for opening that by words. Any other public comments? Then we'll move back to the main business, as you standing always. With West Suffolk shopfront design guide.
I think we're going to get the information from the Town Park.
Well, it's a simple document that was circulated, so you have a chance to read it. I've just put it on screen because there's any particular part of it you want to refer to.
I should clarify, Councillor, that the document wasn't circulated. I linked to the document circulated, nobody seen it.
With the paper, Steve, it was also published.
It was sent there, wasn't it, on that attachment of files, it's twenty-nine pages long.
A printed copy has it, obviously.
No, a printed copy, so. But you've also had the link to the site. So it's whether, A, whether we want to respond to it, and B, if we do, how we want to respond. Effectively, what you end up with here is supplementary planning guidance, where rules are set down to what shop fronts, how outlets have to look like. So in theory, you can get a kind of, you can decide the look of, in this case, Hayville High Street, and how things can comply. You can't implement it retrospectively, so you can't go along to other people their signs don't match what we've just introduced. But if somebody wants some great garish pink neon sign flashing away, you can rely on a document like this to actually say, no, that's against the rules, we don't allow that in West Suffolk. I don't know whether they'll be prepared to draw down into individual towns particularly, but my experience of this is that it's actually very hard work to get them to be implemented, mostly because when people set up a new shop, often if it's a franchise, they pay their ten thousand pounds to the franchise. With it, in that money comes the standard signs for the shop with the corporate look they brought in to. And by the time it gets in front of the planning department for having the sign put up, often retrospectively, because they've instantly put the sign up, to be told you can't have that goes down very, very badly. It tends to be resisted, and I don't believe it, but it's not enforced. So we have to feel we really have a very clear need for how things have to look in Hayville before we go down this road.
Councillor Goody.
I have a problem with homogenising shop fronts, because there's been lots of complaints from people over the years about all the High Streets look exactly the same. They've all got the same outlets, they've all got Costa Coffee, they've all got Iceland World, you know. I think one of the challenges about Hayville's High Street is the individuality, and I wouldn't want to control that any other way. I quite like the idea of someone coming along with some off-the-wall idea and having a different shop front. If they want signs, they have to go through planning anyway. And if they're a garish fluorescent sign, who can object to that? Whether or not people will be upheld by the Borough, I don't know, because evidence on its merit. But I've seen planning applications come through from national chains, and they say, in the planning application, you can't object to this because we're a established borough and there's nine hundred branches throughout the country, and this is no different. So like you said earlier, I don't think you can actually say to people, we want an old-style High Street and you can't have a Costa Coffee type front or a Iceland type front. So I don't like the idea of trying to homogenise the High Street.
I would remind councillors that we did object to the repainting of the party shop in Queen Street, basically in Conservation Area, and there were no powers to support that objection. This is an opportunity to...
The party shop's now closed.
Well, that's the hint there, but it's not the party shop under it. Because we were saying that when we did want to stop someone doing something that seemed improper, we didn't have any powers to do it. This design guide provides an opportunity to remedy that. Councillor Roach.
I'll have a quick look at the document, and there was nothing in there that seems to be not sensible. And it did cover areas like conservation areas and making sure that things were in keeping with the conservation area. So I think that will cover that sort of thing. So in general, it looks like some reasoning for the document.
Councillor Brown.
I like that, it's some good signs, then we've got a High Street.
Councillor.
Yes, it's a moment. It's red, isn't it?
Councillor Stone.
Can you give us a bit more guidance on the enforceability of any content of this? Since we're already challenged through having anything which is in planning regulations in force today.
Well, supplementary planning documents are basically a sub-document of the local plan. So it's a bit like a neighbourhood plan, by the way. You can rely on that, it gets adopted by the Borough. And when we're looking at a planning application, if the document was given earlier, if that didn't comply with the shopfront design guide, we could quote the various clauses within it as part of our objection. In the same way, we might quote the air for planning application. The recent one for the flats at the Bell wasn't in line with policy TV two, which is about nothing that should detract from retail within the High Street. So effectively, you would find whichever clause within this document that you could rely on. And the planning officers, this has to be kept up to date, and it has to be kept aware of the exists, because as people move out, people turn over it, it can be forgotten. But our role would be to remind planners that this document exists, that it has set out certain standards to be maintained. And then if we see something come along that doesn't meet that standard, then we'd totally use that document to stop anything under that.
So the second part of that question then, as we're a consultee for this, it's some sort of regulation that we can use. My thoughts on this are, could it also be used against us? So if the Town Planners sitting at the Borough decided that they liked the look of something in particular, they could use this document to support its implementation?
There seems to be a feeling that we should be commenting on the consultation. Can you remind us what the consultation period is?
We've got to January, is it September, January?
I'd like to suggest, Councillor, that we would pass this to the planning committee. And if anyone who's not in the planning committee wishes to express a review, we'd have the opportunity to study it. Perhaps you'd pass your comments to the Chair of Planning.
Yep.
I'll find out the day. It's split up, yeah.
Just want you to pay for passing on to the planning committee. And you know, we can...
We're meeting the week after next, I think, so next week, isn't it?
No, sixth of January.
Oh, is it sixth of January now?
It is in time. There was a printed copy available, the Borough wasn't providing any. It was twenty-eight pages long, and I can pick one off, if you want to see a bit of a proper...
Item six, the draft project for 2015/16. You should have this large sheet ready. The majority of the contents of this were discussed at personnel, had been... The majority of the contents of this were discussed if personnel had been considered previously in the planning process. Is there any answer?
A couple of things. What I've done, this is the third page of the document that was sent out with the addition of year two and year three, and turned out to be made size you can actually physically read it. Fortunately, the one that was sent out was very, very small indeed. This was basically the summary document. So very slight challenges from the boroughs that went to finance, that's now because we have tax base in. Now, the tax base, unfortunately, it's been removed in fees even just quarter of an hour before the planning meeting, I took a call from the borough, changing or is moving the goalpost. I had, having got the tax base in, I was surprised to find that the tax base had only gone up by twenty one houses. But in the course of two years, the tax base has been paid there, but it's gone up by just twenty six properties. Now, clearly, with all the planning that's going on, there's an awful lot more than that to deal with. There are a lot of variations to bear in mind. If you have people who have divorced or one of the partners has died, then you can end up with a house that probably only has one adult in it, and therefore they get a discount on the council tax and that will make a difference. The same with any employment issues as well. But generally, in Hayville, you'd expect to see the number going up because the number of extra houses in Hayville, the search parks, the properties are not in Hayville, but just down the road, Law Homes, building a whole load, Major forty three. So I went back to the borough and queried the tax base and asked for them to send through all the information and how the tax base was calculated. The reason the tax base hadn't gone up was that the calculation includes the collection rate. Obviously, you're not going to get a hundred percent. Not everyone pays their bills as well. In actual fact, in Debenhamsbury, there's a highest collection rate, or has had the highest collection rate in Suffolk, at ninety eight point four percent. And that's the figure that was used for the tax base last year. This upcoming year, they had used a composite rate of ninety eight percent for most properties, but for those properties that were in the council tax reduction scheme, they were operating a ninety percent collection rate, which meant a composite rate of ninety six point seven five. Now, that one point six five reduction is ten thousand pounds a year less for us. It's also less for the county council, the borough council, the police, the fire brigade, et cetera. So I queried that and they maintain, the finance department maintain, that they have been prudent and they feel they've been accurate in their figures and that's what I think the estimate will be. We do have a challenge out with them that in the normal case of affairs, if they reckon the collection rate's ninety eight point four and only collect ninety eight, we're in the clear, we've had our money, they have to take the hit. If it turns out to be ninety eight point five, then they get the money, we don't get the money. There's a collection fund that it all pays into and all the principal councils, the county council, the borough council and the fire and police get their fair share, however the spoils are, and also they have to take a fair share of the hit if they're over the okay. So there's a good argument for them to be pessimistic because for them, it won't make any difference, they'll get their money later in the year. But for every town and parish council in Debenhamsbury, setting a very low rate builds in the one point six five percent cut effectively. So if you're seeing other towns and parishes announcing a two percent uplift in the preset they want to charge differently, then one point six five percent of that is simply getting back to where they were because of the reduction of collection rate. So we've challenged this year, okay, they're professionals, they know what they're doing, they may well be right, that the rate will be lower, in which case we're entirely justified. But if they're wrong and they maintain being the highest collection rate in Suffolk, can we have a share of the spoils rather than just the principal councils? Because if it's the towns and parishes, they would permanently lose out. I mean, it seems slightly unfair that, it doesn't matter if they get it wrong because they'll get the money, but we will never get the money. So I will be putting that to the chief executive there on Thursday and have a meeting with town councils and him on Thursday. And I've put that on the agenda. But councillor Burn is raising that tonight for council. However, in the meantime, that's the bad news. The good news is that the borough have found an error in our favour, which very nearly completely reverses the cut that we would otherwise have taken. So there will be slightly more money. So some of the trimming that we've done, we can look at whether we really need to trim those figures quite so much. As things currently stand, with some trimming of what we intended, we can keep to a zero percent increase, the one hundred and seventy five for the next financial year, with about two thousand pounds to spare. Having said that, next year, twenty sixteen seventeen, the next financial year, you see in year two, there's a four point six percent uplift will be needed, plus money coming out of the reserves. That works its way through for year three, where we get back down to slightly more realistic levels of two point nine percent and we balance the books again. We can afford a little bit of a float down because we're doing well this year and we set a general reserve of three months and we're comfortably heading to exceed that figure. So we can afford to let it float down a bit and keep council tax down in the upcoming financial year fairly comfortably. It really does depend on what happens to the tax base, what happens to the collection rate. I've revised down the tax base for future years based on the borough's figures. So I have been as pessimistic as they have, as of course I have a little choice but to be. Hence the reason, not this financial year coming up, but the following one, looks fairly bad for us, having to put the preset up next year. But it could all change. By the time that comes around, we'll know what's happening as far as the boundaries are concerned. Some of the houses that are currently under construction, definitely finished, definitely the part as far as council tax is concerned. And of course, from an austerity point of view, this country is actually hopefully slowly coming out of austerity. We should see some of the figures for council tax this far. It's also beginning to fall, it's being moved back into the board. So although I've set a balance for the year you need to decide on, it's left a bit of an uphill for the following year, but there's an awful lot of unknowns, all of which would fall in our favour if they fall anyway, because I've taken a pessimistic view of it.
Councillor, may I recall that when we challenged the withdrawal of the council tax support grant, we were relying on the year uplift in the tax base over a number of years to restore our position and put us back into the right arena. It's very disappointing to find this year, despite additional one hundred and thirty eight properties being recognised on register, only twenty one actually reduced a preset for us. That's now been modified and yawns closer to, I think, eighty, eighty five-ish. So we are on the way in anticipation that the tax base would increase and thus mitigate the loss of the thirty odd play. It's paying off, but as the town clerk pointed out, not as fast as you would hope. However, on the horizon, to be optimistic, we have been talking about two thousand and five hundred homes built over ten, fifteen years, so that will certainly contribute. And we understand that these five hundred, five hundred of those homes will be in reverse phase. So the future looks bright, but we have to make the reasonable town broadcast for the short term.
I have a question.
Councillor Roach.
There's been some discussion in the press about the rates levied on businesses which are collected and go to central government and then redistributed. And there was some talk about some of that money filtering down to councillor Sutter Dallas. Is there any news on that?
Yes, there is. The government's decided not to do that.
Do you insist on agreeing with this?
No, we'll go through January is when we have to finally make the decision, just note it at this stage, particularly as we have to adjust for town and local because of the previous.
Councillor Roach.
Yeah, just a query on year two. The, it says to and from reserves, is that if we add that amount to the four point six uplift required, would that bring that four point six down if we added that forty one thousand or wouldn't that alter it all?
No, it's the opposite. That forty one thousand coming out of the reserves to balance the preset requirement on year two, preset requirement, and bear in mind, these are estimated figures, kind of a sort of mathematical wonderland to a certain extent. Preset requirement for sixteen seventeen would be eight five six seven four three, but the preset is predicted to be eight one five five oh eight. So we'd be forty one thousand short, even with a four point nine percent uplift.
Four point six.
Four point six percent uplift. So to actually clear that, we'd have to increase the preset by a very large proportion. And to be honest, it's a difficult point, us worrying about that until all the issues I've talked about have dealt, this may never come to pass. You'll recall the quality council status is supposed to produce a three-year budget prediction. Lots of councils dislike doing it because we're so much of a pistol war gazing that people can get very het up about figures that are really just, you know, they may never come to pass.
Thank you, Chair. Did you hear that's noted?
Noted.
Item seven, updates of policies. You received copy of the health and safety policy and equality and diversity policy. Does anybody have a seat for those? Page three copies. Check the health and safety policy first. Were any general comments before we go out with councillor Evans with the mouth?
I've got some suggested amendments. One point six, should any of our activities in Jameson Health and Empowerment, such activities will be monitored? I thought we should be taking steps to reduce that as much as possible rather than just monitoring it. So if you identify a hazard, then we should reduce that as much as possible. On two point seven, it says usable safety equipment and or protective clothing as may be provided. And I think actually it will be provided.
That's been required.
So whereabouts for you?
Two point seven.
All our employees must use all safe equipment and or protective clothing as may be provided.
Yeah, but it should be required, it should be agreed. If the equipment is provided, it must be used. Yeah. But if it's needed, it should be provided.
But if this is under responsibilities of employees.
And that's why, that's why it should be agreed, that if the PPE or whatever it is is required, then the employee must use it.
Yeah, it says all our employees must use all safe equipment and or protective clothing. I can just remove that as may be, it just says provided.
Okay. At two point nine, it says maintain all equipment in good condition. Is that the employee maintaining good condition or the town council providing good condition?
Employee must maintain it in good condition, i.e. if we give you safety equipment, you must respect and not destroy it.
Thank you, Councillor Evans. Just flick through page by page in. On the first page, did you address the authorities' comments about one six?
Yeah, reduce as much as possible and that is the same.
Page two, that's all for us. And page three. Page four. Page five.
Just on page five, you'll notice there are some question marks and some gaps in there, they will be filled in. Just on nine B, sorry, nine G, are the extinguishers tested by? We have actually got that. Something you may have up to date, which is the one that just came out.
Chair, can I?
I'll just give you that.
Chair, can I just go back to number two, item two? It says, if you look at two point one three, which is on page two, it said observe fire evacuation procedure. Shouldn't there be the muster points? Shouldn't they be, you know, shouldn't that be included in that somewhere? Evacuate to the muster points? Because, quite like I say, should know where their muster points are, there is a fire evacuation, shouldn't there?
I think the muster points are part of the fire evacuation procedure, aren't they?
Yeah, they should know where the, you know, so it should be included. No, they should know where their muster points are.
A responsibility.
Okay, subject to those amendments, I would assign that review as complete to fire evacuation.
Yes.
Okay. Same procedure for the equality and diversity policy. Any general notes before we... Is there anything on the first page? Can you speak to this?
No, everything I say is that the personnel committee is really, is recommended as well as employees and etc.
On the second page, you comment, with your consent, then we adopt this, which is our best policy. Second, that's the right one there. Will I be paid by? Thank you. Item eight one, Hayville. On the master plan, I can tell you that we met this morning, the core group for the master plan met this morning to select tenderers for the consultation exercise as part of the master plan. The three tenders came in, all three tenders were very robust, very extensive and very detailed. They were scored using an independent scoring method in the process and a county supplier has been selected, although they haven't been told yet, so I'm not supposed to read who it is. But we have found a suitable supplier to do the consultation, the whole process of consultation, still with a due to completing by September next year. I have to say, that has been a key issue for the people involved, that we are fed up with this going on, so we need it completed quickly so we can start to get things rolling. A few things are rolling, but the whole package needs to be out for the public consultation by June of next summer. You'll understand, I'm sure, that the election gets in the way a bit for some of the activities, but that doesn't prevent consultation. The cost is sixty thousand pounds as expected, sixty for the consultation exercise.
I thought it was a figure of thirty, man.
The total cost, sorry, I've perhaps not made that big of a mistake. The total cost is sixty. Of that, the contribution we're being asked to make is twenty thousand pounds, which is a third of the overall total contribution to coming from other partners in one area, including this flash contribution from St Debenhamsbury and from the Chamber of Commerce, although their contributions are in slightly different forms. Well, I'm not asking you now to approve that, that's a matter for the town council to approve formally when the full details are known, you know who the contractor is and what services has been provided. I'm just forewarning you that that's a feature of the commitment that's being sought by the town council. The good news is the master plan is on track. It has taken a while to find consultants that could cope with the sort of consultation that we want and to wrest control from St Debenhamsbury of the process, to make sure that we are running the process in Hayville amongst one area. The most One Haverhill representatives from here, rather than St Edmundsbury telling us how they can consult us again. I possibly have some comment to do with the other One Haverhill aspects.
The board meeting, which we'll take back last week, well, this one didn't happen, was cancelled. That'll be rescheduled for the new year. In terms of issues that are arising, the probably key issue, I think the, is anything more to clean with the society? Really, it's not an old thought of organisation, really, it's actually a short time to fascinate it. It's not been a lot more to say, I think. Is there anything you're expecting with that to talk about?
No, just the situation on the hub remains fluid at the moment. We are no further advanced in getting in, securing the hub for the project that's proposed still there.
Yeah, we have a meeting arranged in the new year with the portfolio holder for children and young people. And I think that would be key to work out exactly what the county council's intentions are. We've outlined the support that we need from them financially add up. Otherwise, it would look, I would say it would look like a project that the One Haverhill wouldn't be able to implement to the town council. So that's going to be a key meeting, we have that in January, we'll see how it goes.
Councillor Clatchey.
This thing about the dementia, of course, gone on so long, I mean, the youth of Haverhill have promises made to them and they're not materialising. Why not give them a nice Christmas present and ask the use of bourbon house and least incentive for youth adults? Save a lot of money, wouldn't they? And would happen.
Is that nice of you asking to place on the agenda for the rest of the year?
Yes.
Now, questions on One Haverhill activity? Move on then to item nine, adoption of committee reports. There hasn't been an appeal to committee, so there's nothing to adopt. The finance committee, next meeting is on the thirteenth January. Personnel committee, next meeting on the twentieth January. Personnel committee, we should have had redacted units of the personnel because you had only ninth December. Have a proposer to accept any of this? Councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Woody. All those in favour of accepting the minutes? Haven't seen them. Any options to read them now?
Yes, I'm sorry, obviously some councillors got the, it's a positive.
So it was a day now with all sorts of attachments, wasn't it?
Yeah. Obviously, three councillors say get theirs hard copy anyway. Has there been a point about that?
We'll come back to the personnel committee, it doesn't matter, we're constantly, the planning committee. We'll come back, Councillor Clatchey, we've been looking at this a little bit. So many doctors have been to the planning committee meetings we held on the second of December and today's the planning committee, we obviously can't adopt the minutes for today's.
No, just noted before.
All right. The planning committee meeting's held on the second December. Proposer, councillor Roach, seconded by councillor Hendon. All those in favour of accepting those minutes? Go back to the personnel committee, have the opportunity to look now.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Yes, can it be noted that for the planning committee that was on tonight, that I was here, but unable to enter the building?
I'll ask the part to note that on me. So this question of the chair of the planning committee.
Do you know people who are asked on? It requires a key.
So proposed by councillor Turner and seconded by councillor Woody. All those in favour of accepting the personnel minutes? Item ten, to redate the meetings in two thousand and fifteen. Councillors should receive a grid like that. We, as ever, at the mercy of anyone who gets elected to any other appointments, whether some of these might change after many, in hope of anticipation, we would set these dates. The actual dates of the meetings chooses generally don't clash. Very occasionally, as tonight, it does clash for final meetings. Is there anything on here that anybody objects to?
No.
So can we take those as agreed? I'm going to need a proposer in a second, so that's proposed by councillor, you're going to second by councillor Martin. All those in favour? Authorized payments, we provide councils, these are schedules that probably want to have been checked and signed by two councillors. This is a summary of the schedules. And we, councillor Woody proposes councillor Clatchey, councillor Roach seconds. All those in favour of accepting those minutes? Question two, item, urgent response.
No, that's over.
Thank you. So we come to item thirteen, we have to exclude the press and the public, thank you very much.